All right, the time is 6:00 PM on January 18th, 2021. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order with a roll call, please. Councilmember Mendoza. Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez. I know she is joining, so we'll note that in a minute when she joins. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez.
Here.
Mayor Walter, here. Let's begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, we'll open up our first call to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time? Sean, do you see any hands that are raised that I'm not seeing?
I do, we have Kathy Adams.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kathy Adams.
Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor, and Council, it's Kathy Adams, 240 East Ruggles. I'd like to just say a word of congratulations to Ray Hartzell. I understand he's celebrating his 20th year of service, and I would like to thank him. He's one of the first townspeople I met when I moved here. I believe Ray was here before Brian, before John Nixon. And I think he would breathe new life into our home tour when it was kind of on life support. And with him and his committee, I think the town has brought that home tour back to being one of the premier home tours in the state. And I'm really proud of that, and I think Ray had a lot to do with it. I also just wanted to mention that we have Ray to thank for a lot of our beautiful planters on Main Street. It was not on my radar. Ray pretty much wrestled me into agreeing to doing one. I know he was on a personal mission to make sure our Main Street was gorgeous. And beyond that, he and his team have helped us keep those planters watered because in the summertime, it's quite an effort. So I thank him and his team. And again, Ray, just thank you for all the above and beyond and extra you do for our town. Congratulations.
Aw, thank you, Kathy, that was so kind of you to comment on that, and I agree with your sentiments. Is there anybody else, Sean, who would like to speak at this time?
I don't see anybody else. I do see one person that is dialed in, so if they would like to speak, if they can dial star nine, it'll raise their hand for us. And I do not see a hand raised.
Perfect. There'll be a second opportunity for anybody out there. At this time, we're closing the first call to the public. Our first item is presentations. Item 6A is a presentation of the Outstanding Employee Recognition Program Award to Ms. Patricia, known to us as Trish Buchanan, for her outstanding contributions to our organization. I want to share something this evening. So. Trish received the following nomination. The Employee of the Month is about recognition for those that go beyond, above and beyond the call of duty. And I want to share with you my interactions with Patricia, Trish Buchanan. Ms. Buchanan is an administrative assistant for the Town Clerk's Office, and I hear she is one phenomenal employee. However, my connection with Trish comes outside of her normal duties and falls within community commitment. Approximately one year ago, our food bank distribution partner, United, told us that they would no longer be delivering emergency food boxes to the town of Florence as the need no longer existed. Understanding that losing this partnership would be detrimental to the town, Trish was instrumental in gathering our faith-based partners and community members to strategize keeping the United commitment of food delivery to those in need. As part of this effort and a stipulation for continued food delivery, United said their folks would no longer be responsible for any aspects of the food distribution other than bringing food to a specified location, and the town of Florence would need to take over responsibility for distribution of food to the community. Trish was one of the two that took the lead in receiving training on a mandatory database that tracks federal food allocation and is a major part of this program. No one else stepped up, and without the completion of this training, the food distribution would not be possible. Her energy did not stop there. She recognized that the slumping number of food recipients that the United was reporting did not support what she knew without our community. Trish was key in reaching out to multiple community resources to emphasize and advertise the use of the food bank. The first month of the operation, we saw an increase of use from 40 minus to 60 plus, a direct result of Trish's involvement. She does not stand still. Trish was, you know, she stands out. She has enthusiasm for receiving training on all aspects of the food distribution. Now educated, she knows how to run many of the positions needed for completing a food distribution. Again, one of the only two people. Trish believes that this community, and she sacrifices for its benefit. She has been flawless in her effort. She has not missed one food distribution event, and Trish's singular efforts have helped provide over 900 packages of food and service of 1,000-plus people in need. Should you have an opportunity to stop by the food bank on the last Friday of the month, you will notice the cars lined around the block, ready to receive a food allocation. And that line represents the need that Trish knew existed and made a reality. Without her exemplary involvement, our town would have been left without a resource to provide for those in need. Her effort this month to this program, in addition to her normal duties, surely made her the standout for the Employee of the Month. Trish, I want to say congratulations, and you will be receiving a $75 gift certificate to any Florence business of your choice. And I will be in this week to congratulate you. Would you like to say a few words? Lisa, is Trish on?
I'm here.
Okay, there you are.
Thank you, everyone, for this recognition. I'm only one part of that really great volunteer team that the police chief leads. I want to thank everyone who participates. We have a lot of great volunteers that come out every month to distribute the food. So thank you again, it's greatly appreciated, and I hope to see you all out there. Wave at me when you drive by.
Thank you, Trish. Our next presentation is recognition of Leland Ray Hartzell for 20 years of service with the town of Florence. Ray started his career with the town of Florence in 2002 as a maintenance worker with the Parks and Recreation Department. In July of 2005, he was promoted to Parks Maintenance Foreman, and July 2007, he accepted the promotion to Parks Superintendent. From March 2009 to 2014, he served as the Parks and Recreation Director, and in 2014, he resumed his role as the Park Superintendent, and he remains in this position. Ray really enjoys serving the public, and he has been part of many wonderful events and programs that have taken place around the town's parks. He assisted in the preparation for these events, and he helped make them a success by making sure the park facilities and the grounds are well-kept. Ray takes pride in the community achievements of the Community Services Department, and he is a valued member of our Florence team. Ray, congratulations, and I will be in to congratulate you. Would you like to say a few words?
Can you see me okay?
We can see you, how are you today?
Great, thank you, Mayor, and the members of the Council. Appreciate the effort that the town goes into recognizing not only myself, but a lot of the staff members. I couldn't do any of the things that I do without my staff and my coworkers here. I've been blessed to have great leadership from the mayor and councils that I've been working with since I've been here, to the administrators, the town managers. I want to point out and mention a couple names, if I may, that have been mentors and friends to me since I've been here. Ms. Becky Jimenez, Ms. Lisa Garcia, who have taught me so much about the town and administration. I couldn't have done the work that I've done without some of their help. The leadership from the top down has been just phenomenal and really made it a joy to actually get up on Mondays and come to work. So you don't hear that a lot, but I actually enjoy doing it, even after all these years, getting to come into work with the coworkers that we have, the new leadership that we're experiencing here in our department. Everything has kind of turned over different, at least, believe. Excited about where we're going, and I'm just excited to continue to be a part of it. So just want to thank you all for the recognition and the effort that you all put into it.
Thank you for all that you do. You are sincerely appreciated, and we are glad that you are part of the Florence family and team.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item C is our post-event presentation on the Junior Prado rodeo by event organizer Bill Foster. Mayor Bill was going to be calling in to the meeting. You know, he was having some issues with his computer, so I don't know if we're able to see him out there in the cyber world anywhere. Sean, do you see Bill in the cyber world by any chance?
I see a couple numbers that are dialed in. If they can push star nine on their touchpad on their phone, we can make it so they'll be able to talk here.
And I did receive a text. He says he can hear, but I'm not sure if he's able to speak.
Give me just a second here.
Now, while they're going ahead and they're trying to connect Bill, we're just gonna talk about the background a little bit. Remember, the town solicited an RFP for the 89th Annual Junior Prado Rodeo. The event producer in August of 2021, Mr. Bill Foster, the grandson of Mr. Charles Whitlow, the founder of the Junior Prado Rodeo, was the only submittal for this solicitation, and Mr. Foster's submittal was accepted. And he hosted a successful Junior Prado rodeo in November of 2021. He is here today to present the post-event report. We understand that he is having a little bit of technical difficulty. We'll give it a few minutes. If for some reason there is challenges and we cannot get him to connect, I want to make sure that we do him justice in regards to allowing him both that audio and visual presentation. So if we need to, we can put him on the next immediate agenda.
I just sent you over an email real quick, asking for his phone number, so we're not just putting it out.
Mayor, we could always move forward and then come back to this item if you prefer. Okay, let's do that while we're still trying to get him to connect. And again, if for some reason we have challenges, we will make it happen because we value Bill and all he has done in regards to the rodeo, especially for the town of Florence. Item number seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is ratification of Town Manager Brent Billingsley resignation effective February 4th, 2022. Item B is the appointment of Deputy Town Manager, Town Clerk, to perform the duties of the Town Manager with all of the powers and duties as described in Town Code Section 31.071 for a period of time until the Town Council appoints a permanent Town Manager beginning February 4th, 2022. Item C is adoption of Resolution 1809-22. This is a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving and authorizing Mayor Tara Walter, Deputy Town Manager Lisa Garcia, and Finance Director Rebecca Jimenez to act as signatories for the transaction of business on the town of Florence banking accounts and declaring an emergency. Item D is proclamation declaring 2022 as School Board Recognition Month. Item E is proclamation declaring January 2022 as Civil Rights Month. Item F is approval of the October 24th, November 1st, November 15th, and December 6th, 2021 Town Council Meeting Minutes. And Item G is to receive and file the following boards and commission minutes. One is October 26th, 2021 Historic District Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes. And Item Two is October 21st and November 4th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your agenda. Is there anybody at this time that would like any item removed? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
The move.
In a second?
Second, second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? And that motion carries.
Mayor, we do have him connected, so I can allow him to talk if you're ready to move forward with.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Sean.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you. How are you today, Mr. Foster?
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to provide, excuse me, this wrap-up. The Junior Prado was a huge success with a very short time to plan and prepare and solicit sponsors and ensure we could meet all the requirements of this sanctioned rodeo. The Florence Junior Prado Rodeo Committee did an outstanding job. As it began, we were, we determined the need for aggressive marketing and advertisement. So we solicited the assistance of Casa Grande Newspaper, Florence Blade, and Tribune, the Tri Valley, Tri Media, and Boston Digital Marketing. With their help, we were able to sell and provide advertisements for all of our sponsors. The Florence Junior Prado website and Facebook page was created and provided a great platform to get the word out and promote the rich history this rodeo brings to Florence. The rodeo program, which was in full color, really highlighted this year's event with information about the rodeo, sponsorship ads, and the contestant day sheets. Attendance was phenomenal on Saturday. We determined we had over 600 spectators, and actually about 80% of those in attendance were from outside of Florence. Sunday brought about half of the attendance, as did Saturday. Four food trucks provided breakfast, lunch, and dinner for the weekend, and they were very busy. We also had merchant vendors on hand, and they were very successful. The participation of over 200 contestants, along with their families, we determined that the overall attendance, including spectators and family, exceeded 1,500 people on Saturday alone. Being able to provide the best outcome and a successful event, we understand, understood early on it would take money to do that. Through your generosity, you know, we were able to do that and get it done. I want to thank the town of Florence staff, Council, for their support and hard work, as well as a huge thanks to all the rodeo committee members who set aside time in their busy lives to volunteer countless hours, making this the best, longest-lasting junior rodeo in the world. Is there any questions for me?
Council, do you have any specific questions regarding the rodeo for Mr. Foster?
No.
No, but we certainly have a lot of appreciation and sincere thank you for you facilitating coordinating and facilitating the event.
It was my pleasure.
There's a lot of positive feedback, and it was a lot of fun, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Did you have anything else, Mr. Foster?
No, not at this time.
All right.
Thanks again.
We are looking forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is our new business. Item 8A is Resolution Number 180822. This is the first reading. This is a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, declaring as a public record certain technical code documents filed with the Town Clerk entitled 2018 International Building Code, 2018 International Existing Building Code, 2018 International Fire Code, 2018 International Fuel Gas Code, 2018 International Mechanical Code, 2018 International Plumbing Code, 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, 2018 International Residential Code, 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, 2017 National Electric Code, and the 2009 Accessible and Usable Buildings and Facility Code. At this time, I'll go ahead and call forward Mr. Keith Eaton.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor and Council. So it's an honor for me to sit before you tonight to discuss the next steps in our ICC code adoption. This goes back to our first conversation that we had in September, where Council voted to move forward with the adoption and preparation. Tonight, I've got two things. Obviously, we've got the resolution, and we've got an ordinance to put on here. At the end, I've got a short presentation. At the end, it is, we're requesting guidance of Council as far as the next step. There are a number of next steps that can be taken. All of them are right, so it's whatever steps that this Council would like to take in doing that. So like I say, a real quick update. All right. So as I said tonight, it's just a quick update that we go through. So what we've done, we start out with just an updated timeline. It was our original plan when we discussed this in September to have an implementation of January 1. With bringing on a new fire chief, it was very important for us to get his input as the fire code is part of this code set. We did that. We worked through that. So this new adoption timeline that we've got, obviously, the first read is tonight. It will be your guidance if we want to have a work session, whatever work session, that looks like a full work session, partial. We are certainly open for that. It is our goal for a final read and adoption of the February 21st for a final read. However, I will tell you that these dates are not ingrained, and in no time do we want to push this through. If you, if whenever Council's ready, we can just delay our end time for that. What we've been doing, we've been continuing since that meeting in September. We met the former building official, myself, met with the insurance service office team. We had a review in December. We had great comments as to what has been done previous by councils and staff to get us to where we're at now. We did make them aware that we are adopting a new code. They said the new code would give us extra credit once adopted. It just depends on the date that that's going to be adopted as to if we're able to get credit or not on that. It's not by any means something that's a deal killer. We've continued our amendment reviews. Like I said, we worked closely with the fire chief, fire staff, as long as the building staff here, going through the amendments and looking at the amendments. We also put the amendments out to the Builders Association of Central Arizona. Jackson Mall is representative, is the vice president's representative that represents jurisdictions and home builders along the line, I should say mostly home builders, and Martha's Beach go to the options. I've got it. Is there, you guys hear a noise? Is it coming from me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I don't know what that is. I've never heard of it before. So anyway, we shot the amendments over to him. He does review on amendments. Amendments that you see before you tonight were with changes that they had suggested in other jurisdictions. They weren't anything major, and so we added those in there already. It is our intent to meet with our three major builders, along with our other smaller builders within the town, to go over our amendments. We will do it line by line if they would like. We're going to leave that up to them to go through that, but they will also have input before the end of this. I would like to do this prior to the work session, if we're going to do a work session. That way, you all are aware of some of the changes, comments that the builders had made. Council feedback, of course, as I stated in the beginning, this is the important part. This code change, there's a lot of working parts, and I'm not sure how far everybody's got in the links that I had sent out earlier in the month, but there's a lot of information here. It's very important to us, that Council understands. If it's line by line, we will do line by line. It's very important that you have your input. Where do we go from here? So tonight, we've obviously prepared the ordinance and resolution, and we do have the draft copy of amendments to you for your pleasure. Council action then, whatever that is after tonight, some workstation, whatever that is, and then with effective date, and this is again, a date that's not in stone, that we would hope to have this take effect in full first. The implementation plan is pretty simple. We have a grace period that when we do this, any, any plans that are submitted, any permits that are submitted under the previous code will be addressed under the previous code. We're very fortunate that most all of our builders presently build to the 2018 code in other jurisdictions. So that, that's really not a big transition for them, probably as much of a transition for us as it is. But we will do normally a three to six month grace period, as we do with all of our customers, we'll work through whatever that is. The reviews, so most, well, all of our builders have a number of standard plans. So for instance, Pulte would build, we have 20 standard plans, all the same plan. The plan review is almost over the counter. So what we will do with those, those plans are already being drawn to 2018. We will do a quick cursory view at no cost to our builders, because there's not much of, not much of a review that goes with it to make sure that we would accept those as their plan. After that, the project is largely complete. Like I say right now, I'll take any questions or comments that you have, and then please, I'd like some guidance from you tonight.
Councilmember Cortez, Vice Mayor Cortez, sorry.
So for me, I would, I would like to see us just go straight into a work session on this for our next step. Keith, you weren't here last time we adopted codes, but we spent a significant amount of time discussing definitions of abandoned buildings, vacant buildings, and I see that there are some new definitions, but we weren't provided with what the current definition is. And so all of the changes came to us with no, nothing to refer back to in the agenda. So I don't, what I don't want to do is take everything that we did last time and start all over, because we discussed it at length to make sure that we were helping our community, because we are not a new-build community. We have a historic district that can't always meet new-build requirements for code, so we need to take that into consideration when we're changing our codes. So I would, I would really like to not spend a lot of time discussing tonight and just schedule us for a work session, because I don't want to see us backtrack. I don't want to see us make codes that are too difficult for our historic buildings to be able to meet. That is one of my biggest concerns, and I know last time we did adopt codes, we kind of, we spent a lot we kind of, we spent a lot of time, but at the same time, um, I know myself was not educated enough, and so we made some decisions that actually hindered some of our businesses, and I don't want to do that again. So I just want to make sure that we remember, we're not all about new builds, we have a lot of historic buildings and homes and everything that will be affected by these codes, so we need to take great caution in how we word things and how we um expect those two to, to be comparable, because they're not apples to apples when you compare those two types of properties.
Oh, that is true, that Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, so I had the luxury of having Jim Allen here, and he actually he actually went through all the codes primarily, you know, before he left, uh, that he was aware of what went through before, and and I also am aware what went through before. What you will see, and we can, we'll put these side by side, uh, is you're absolutely right, not reinventing the wheel. Everything that was, that was brought, that was brought into the other code amendments was carried over into this as far as definition, the old town stuff, um, the cer- certificate of occupancy, uh, maintaining certificate of occupancy and and what was brought in last time. So i- it was very important, and I knew that was very important to this council uh going through this, and Jim and I worked very closely on this, uh, as he had historic knowledge of it. So you are absolutely right, it's, it's something we don't want to reinvent the wheel, and we want to take our time and do this right.
Councilmember Anderson, did you have something that you wanted to add? I saw your hand go up.
No.
Okay.
No.
Alright, well, this is our first reading, so Keith, thank you so much, and as you sent those documents over, I was able to see where you referenced the work prior, being brought forward. Um, and we're glad to know that you've heard council's voices and you're continuing to move in that direction. I also think it would, you know, be helpful as you talked about and have already met with the Central Arizona home builders, um, including even the builders in our community, reaching out with, you know, our planning and zoning for that set of eyes, so we're all on the same page, as well as, you know, our H stack. Because the more involvement in regards to reviewing and communicating and feedback, the better it will be for our community overall.
Absolutely, thank you all so much.
You are welcome.
Judy has her hand up.
Okay, hang on one second, let me finish my sentence. And as we know that this is the first reading, um, when it does go again, we always have that community feedback, the participation, so, I like that. Councilmember Hughes.
I just wanted to uh, uh, supply a second to getting it to a work session.
Oh, okay, thank you. I think that was already established, but thank you for formalizing it.
Alright, well, moving forward, I'll work with Lisa to get a work session scheduled, and uh I'll start probably throwing out some, some questions to you all as far as what that work session looks like and what you would like in that, so that'll be forthcoming in the next few days.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Our next item is item B, this is ordinance number seven one one dash twenty-two. Again, this is a first reading of the ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the following publications with appendices and the town of Florence amendments as listed herein are adopted by reference, regulating and governing the conditions and maintenance of all property, buildings, and structures by providing the standards for supplied utilities and facilities and other physical and conditions essential to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary and fit for occupation and use and condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and use and demolition of such structures in the town of Florence, Arizona, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees therefore, repealing section one fifty dash three hundred of the town of Florence Code of Ordinances and all other ordinances or parts of laws in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date of April first, twenty twenty-two. Again, Mr. Keith Eaton.
Okay, so this is just the second part of getting this of the first reading in, so I won't bore you with that, it's the same presentation. So, we'll just move forward with that, so the first reading.
Alright, thank you so much, and item C is resolution number one eight eighteen ten dash twenty-two. Discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the acceptance of donated funds from Phyllis B. Owen, annuit of Telkot Resolution Life Insurance Company for the town of Florence, Dorothy Nolan Senior Center and the town of Florence, Arizona. This time, I'm going to call forward Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council. Uh, we come before you asking to adopt resolution eighteen ten dash twenty-two. The senior center was notified that one of their senior citizens, Ms. Owen, had passed away and left a gift of life insurance for the senior center. This required uh completing quite a bit of paperwork and uh to submit to the life insurance company, but they require that the council has uh adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager to accept the funds. So uh, we're requesting that you go ahead and um adopt the resolution so we can receive this gift. At this point in time, we do not know how much the gift is, and they would not tell us how much it is, so. Um, the um funds are to be used for the senior center, uh, whatever they require, and what we're asking them to do if, uh, once we receive it, is that they budget in next fiscal year to do that.
That is very kind, um, very much appreciated, and gosh, it's so, you know, whenever anybody always gives, especially when it's our senior center, obviously, they are making such a positive impact and our seniors are always continuing to give back, and I, you know, I want to say thank you to to her, her family in her memory, as well as our staff and their community that they have, you know, created and they have together, that's, you know, such a strong bond.
Yes, it is, I, I've seen the sen- senior center all of these years, their staff is very committed to the seniors, and in turn, the seniors are committed to them, so they help each other out in in their later years in life.
Council, do you have a motion?
I motion, we approve resol- uh, resolution number one eight one zero dash two-two.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close same sign, and that motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Item D is discussion regarding feedback received from downtown commercial revitalization grant committee and applicants. Mr. Elon Valander.
Good evening, Mayor, member of council, members of council, um, let me put my presentation. See, share screen. Apologize for technical difficulties here. Can you all see my screen now? With the presentation, the slideshow.
Yes, we can.
Alright, wonderful, let me get it started here. Um, so the purpose of of this presentation is primarily to give council an opportunity to um, understand the activities, uh, the types of applications and the feedback that has been received on the downtown uh rehabilitation grant uh program, um, before new budget year and budget discussions occur. So, just wanted to walk through um what we've, what we've seen so far. Um, as a reminder, the purpose of this grant was to address deteriorating building uh conditions in the um, downtown re- uh redevelopment area, and uh to encourage use of unoccupied commercial buildings. The grant is designed after CDBG grants, um, provides reimbursement of up to seventy-five percent with a maximum award of about fifty thousand dollars, of fifty thousand dollars per building, and those reimbursements can be made on monthly basis. Eligible participants are property owners and tenants of commercial buildings um, under commercial building zoning codes. Um, and the application period is open um from the beginning of the fiscal year through May thirtieth of of this fiscal year. So status report, we've had four applications that are fully approved, um totaling one hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, one application was partially approved for two thousand dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, remaining portion of the application was not eligible under the exist- existing um eligibility requirements. And uh, they submitted for a re-review of it, and um staff came back with the same outcome, or the review committee came back with the same outcome on that. Uh, one application is currently uh incomplete, it is waiting documents for the committee to make a final review, but the application would be for uh the full fifty thousand dollars. Um, there was one applicant that was denied uh due to the location of the business being outside of the downtown revitalization area. Um, at the time that I compiled this report, we had two projects that that had been completed and been reimbursed for a total of fifty-two thousand and twenty-five dollars. Uh, since I created this report, which was about two and a half, three weeks ago, um, we've had additional reimbursements come in, so there have been additional um progress on the projects. The current total reimbursements processed have been ninety-one thousand dollars, seven hundred and seventy, ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirteen cents um, towards projects that have completed items. And there is another reimbursement request that the committee is currently processing and will be um reviewing tomorrow. Processing times, so the average days uh for app- application approval or denial is um been relatively short in regards to um when an application has been complete. So we're looking at about six point six days, less than a week, uh, between the time that we have a full application to the time that we're able to s- to send them a letter with a notice to proceed. Um, several of the applications, though, have required um a back and forth with uh members of the review committee and staff and the applicants to ensure that they have complete documents and complete uh projects with complete scope. Um, we are averaging sixteen days on reimbursements from the day of submittal. Apology that I have to move my screen around a little for the the windows on my screen a little bit. Um, so committee feedback, there, there's a few things that um as members of staff in the committee, as we process these applications, that we have uh had to have discussions about how to handle. Um, those, those four primary things that we dealt with, uh, first of which was the language of the grant program is both, it's focused on building and life safety code issues, but also is focused on certificate of occupancy. So the opportunity to um get some of our vacant buildings uh filled with new, new businesses. Um, one of the things that uh, that as a committee, we're hoping stat- or council, if they want to continue the uh program forward, would clarify would, would be whether there is a primary desire um to either focus the program solely on vacant buildings or prioritize it on vacant buildings or treat all, all of the buildings, the commercial buildings in the corridor the same. Um, the second item of feedback was that the applications have included um items of life safety concern that are not a physical part of the building, but would remain permanent to the property. Um, this has been less than one percent, uh, but we want to be assured that, that if there are code issues that are existing on a property that do represent life safety, the council would like those to continue to be included. Um, the third is uh these grants have been considered on a first come, first served basis, we haven't had any any competition necessarily, there's still about fifty, fifty-six thousand dollars of funds left, so we haven't had multiple grants um competing for the same dollars yet. Um, staff has suggested and has created a uh an assessment matrix that could be used if that situation arises, um, but it would be beneficial if uh such a matrix may, would be included in a future iteration of the program, um, if it were to be adopted again in a future year. And then there were some project eligibility and timing language issues within uh the grant itself. Specifically, um, there's been a couple cases where, where individuals have approached uh members of the committee asking whether their project would be eligible, uh, because they had, they were within the RDA, the redevelopment area, and had a commercial zoning, but the building that they were inquiring about was being used as a residential structure, a residential, had a residential use to it. And so there was, there's some of those issues that I think that we could clarify um within the program document to ensure that, that um, the review committee understood one hundred percent um, that, that these should be commercially, commercial buildings specifically, and exclude any residential use out of it. Um, there have also been cases uh and some feedback, not from the applicants or from the review committee, but from uh members of the community, um, where we have had cases, we've had applicants, a single own building owner, but, or a single owner that owns multiple buildings and applied for the grants, the way the grant is currently written, that is allowable. Um, but that's something that if council wants to change or address on a future iteration, um, would be, would be good to to consider. Um, and then there was a, an issue with the language um of allowing for existing projects, uh such as a Q and building um, to be allowed to apply for the grant, uh, which that language was adjusted in the program language, but there was a statement later under the notice to proceed that uh indicated that any, any work that had been done prior to the notice proceed letter being sent out would not be eligible. Um, based on the, based on the meeting uh minutes, based on the conversations that we had in the public forum, uh, staff uh erred on the side of what council had, had requested staff to do it, to ensure that projects such as the Q and building that has started, and we're making an impact to, to the buildings in the area, would be open and eligible for consideration as long as they didn't have closed permits. Um, so we, we approached it that way. Applicant feedback, uh, so for full, so for full uh clarity, um, I sent an email out to all of the applicants, letting them know that we would have a session with council and want, and let them know that their feedback would be shared with council, so I made sure that all comments were, were direct quotes from the feedback we received. Um, we can go through these one by one, uh, the primary, primary concerns that the applicants uh had addressed within these is, is that they felt that the process was slow. Um, in a few areas, they felt that reimbursements were, were slow in a few areas. Um, and there was an additional request uh from an individual applicant for more transparency in regards to the process of um approving and or denying grants. Um, so if council would like, we can go by it one by one through the, this particular feedback, or if there are items that you would like to discuss on these, we can do so. Um, I'll move it on to the second page here. Um, but again, I, I'm open to have a conversation and uh kind of describe or explain any of these particular comments that council likes to talk about. But as a whole, uh, one last comment before we get there. We had a uh, as we were processing these reimbursements, we had uh one of the projects that uh came across some other um deficiencies within the building that, in all honesty, due to the fact that the, this project was undertaken um in this, in this grant cycle, um, saved or prevented a future uh electrical uh issue and potential fire opportunity in the community, so uh, it was, it was great to see that, that not only are improvements being made, but um during the course of this work, we're, we're seeing um future life and building uh safety issues being prevented. And I will leave it there and um be happy to discuss or answer questions the council may have.
Alright, I see Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I have a question, and you'll have to excuse me, because um, I'll probably talk through ninety percent of this, but I'll try not to. Um, on the part where you stated applications have included items of life safety concerns that are not a physical part of the building, but would remain a permanent improvement to the property, uh, like what, what are we talking about?
So that specific one um was in relation to uh one thirty uh North Main, I believe, the coffee shop, so the coffee shop submitted an application. So the coffee shop submitted an application that included removal of uh tree that posed um a life safety issue if it were to um be blown over in a storm uh and a building safety issue as well. Uh we had um several meetings with the, the committee to discuss this, to determine whether or not we felt that it, it qualified. Uh we brought in our building in our, uh we brought in um Mr. Allen as well to those meetings to, to be a part of those discussions. And so uh those things that are life safety code issues, but not necessarily improvements to the physical building, um we wanted to make sure what, to get council's feedback, whether or not something like that should be included.
Okay, uh yeah, I, that's a great idea, I think. Um and then my last one, well, kind of just to their comments, um I'll, I'll really only just ask the one because the other ones are kind of like, um, the concerns about uh the proof of basically payment. Um so were applicants not wanting to provide uh canceled checks or, or proof that they had paid? And were they not able to get something from the contractor, making sure that, you know, there was a statement of no lien, you know, it, account was paid in full, there will be no liens placed against them?
So, so to answer that question, uh primarily the concern was is that, that we were requesting um proof of payment via bank statement or via canceled check. Um with the amount of money that we're looking at, we want to make sure that we have an accounting trail showing that that money was actually spent and we didn't just have a receipt indicating that it was paid. Um there were, there were a couple applicants that were concerned about their information being on those forms. Uh we, we let them know that they could redact uh any information they felt uncomfortable with on there. We're primarily concerned with ensuring that we could see an account that reflected those payments. Um no applicant has had a problem with producing documents showing that they've actually paid, that they have an account showing a payment being um drafted from those accounts. So that hasn't been the issue. The first time the issue came up, there was concern that um that they weren't going to be able to get those documents, but we, they found that to be quite easy. They were able to do it same day.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Yes.
But all the feedback I've heard actually has been good um from people. Um so I, I think for our first shot out, we did a pretty good job and everything's going to have some hiccups and some adjustments that need to be made, but um the impact it's made on our community has definitely been a positive one.
Councilmember Neil?
I do remember having a conversation about the how far away from downtown a business could be, but I have a cou- I had a couple of business owners uh approached me and asked me uh about their business and saying that they weren't in downtown, if they were available or not. I remember we talked about, I don't own a business, so I don't remember the boundaries. I'm talking businesses up by Burger King. Um I'm just trying to get to where the boundaries are because these businesses had asked me.
So Councilmember Neil, I, let me see, I, let me stop my screen share here and pull up the program uh document. And I believe we have a map on that, but generally and verbal description of the boundaries. Yeah, I do have a map here. One second, let me share this.
I've also heard the same sentiments and I'm glad that you communicated it, Councilmember Neil, because I was going to also bring that forward tonight. There's businesses that are outside of our redevelopment district, even just a block or two outside of the redevelopment district. And the improvements that they wanted to bring forward would have brought more in regards to life and safety issues. Um and this would have alleviated some of that financial burden upon them because it was not covered under this grant. So that's something our council may want to look at in regards to the actual area and expanding.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Um so the map that you guys should be looking at on your screen is the map of our redevelopment area boundaries. Um verbally, for those that, that don't have a visual cue on this, this extends um to a large amount of property north of the um community center at the north end of Main Street, all the way down to the junction of two eighty-seven and Main Street and expands um about three blocks, give or take, in most areas, um both east and west of Main Street. Uh for consideration and discussion as this comes up um for future, a future iteration, one of the things to consider as to why we chose these boundaries was because this is utilizing redevelopment areas is typical. Um these are typical activities that, that can be undertaken by municipalities um through the state statutes. Uh municipalities are given powers to do certain things on, in redevelopment areas. And so keeping this within the redevelopment areas ensured that we maintained um our proper authorities under state statutes. So there, there could be opportunities as you look forward for expanding this, but there may be need to have a conversation about the redevelopment area boundaries and um the legalities of state statutes and how it would affect that in the future. Um but that was the primary reason for the utilization of these R D A bar, boundaries.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm going to stop sharing this map and go back to the presentation if that's okay?
Council, did you have any other questions for Mr. Valander or comments?
Yes.
Anderson, Councilmember Anderson.
Uh, you know, we've talked about all this redevelopment and we put a lot of money into it. Uh do we know how effective that it's been? Have we brought new businesses in or?
So there, the singular project, there, there's two projects that we would consider completed. Um that would be one forty-three and one thirty Main, the coffee shop and the Q and building. Um the Q and building is, is done and completed. Um and I imagine that I've had some conversations with folks that have expressed interest um in that building. Um I would imagine that that one will probably uh have, have folks talking to agents uh in the future. Um the coffee shop obviously was already there. That was, that was the one that came in with the application uh that included the tree. Um the other projects, the other buildings that have been approved on the grant applications have not completed their projects yet. However, um three sixty and forgive me, I think it's three sixty-four and three seventy-eight, which would be the old uh Florence Market. Will have two businesses uh entering into those, those spaces. Uh they have gotten quite a bit done from their project. The main thing that's, that's held up uh most of these projects is contractors. Uh the contractors getting out and, and timing of getting things done has been difficult and that's been expressed by all applicants um that we've been involved with in the downtown area. Um our folks are having a difficult time finding contractors that will give focus and attention to, to our businesses out here for various reasons. Um but that just, it seems to be the case in the market at this time. Um but I would expect that when these, when the applications that are, are submitted, when those projects complete, and I would expect that the majority, if not all, the projects that get approved will be completed before the end of the fiscal year. Um there will be at least three new businesses that, that will be opened up uh after completion and potentially a fourth. Um but that, the fourth would be for the application that has not yet been complete, if that applicant is, is approved on that project.
Thank you.
Keith, the end, did you have something that you wanted to add as well?
I did, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I just want to give you an update. So as uh, as that question, the Councilmember Anderson had, were, what's going on with those? I've actually been interacting with both of the projects that are coming to an end right now. So the, the gentry's uh or the uh, yeah, the, the, the market building with, that will house of our new businesses uh are actually preparing to connect the fire sprinkler to the water system right now. So that has been an extensive job, very big job to get that sprinkler system in that building. Uh and that, this is going to be um probably one of the things that we can really hang a hat on with this project that council has, has afforded to them, uh get that done. The second one uh is three oh one, uh so it's the corner building. Uh so she has just completed uh about half of her application with a lot of, with new electrical. Uh and then they'll be starting the fire sprinklers uh rather soon too. So both of those projects are moving along very nicely. I just wanted to give you that update.
Thank you, that's excellent. All right, and again, if there's any um applicants or potential applicants that are out there, um please know that you can always reach out as well and continue to give your feedback. We hear you, our staff is hearing you, and we look forward to continuing to communicate about this program that's having a positive impact on our community.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um if I could just interject at the end of this, for those that are watching and are interested in the program, um whether, I would invite anyone that, that feels like they may be eligible to apply, to apply. Um we still have a little bit over fifty-six thousand dollars available for applicants. Again, there is one application that's not yet complete, but uh, but the money is there and we'd love to, to feel the applications and respond back, so.
And in the meantime, can staff please look into the previous discussion that we held regarding outside of our redevelopment area, especially when we're talking a block or two?
Yes, ma'am, I will, uh we'll have discussions internally and then uh I will have a response back out to council so that as you guys look at a iteration for, or a future iteration of this program, that you'll have that information available to you.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. All right, at this time, we will move into item number nine, which is our manager's report.
How to Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Um as, as you noticed, there's not a written report uh for this meeting. Uh I talked with the mayor and, and asked if I could have some time uh to provide some thank yous uh and some recognition. Uh I have really appreciated my time as the Florence Town Manager over the last six plus years. Uh it has been a dream job. Uh it has been a difficult job, but it's been one that, that I've really enjoyed and I want to thank the council for the opportunity. Uh this council, the previous councils uh for the opportunity to be able to serve you uh and the town of Florence. I wanted to provide a thank you to the Florence staff. Florence has a great staff. We've always had a great staff. We will continue to have a, a great staff in the future, but it's due to the staff that so many positive uh things have occurred. Projects have been completed, codes have been updated, new programs have been developed. Uh the last uh six plus years has, has been very successful and very busy. Uh for all of you that know, I have a whiteboard, a school-sized whiteboard on the wall in my office. Uh it has become a prominent feature in this office and the number of people have requested to come by and take a picture of the board uh in the last few weeks. It includes about eighty ongoing projects uh that are priorities and then a parking lot of an additional twenty-five uh that are forthcoming projects. During my time here, I've used this notebook to keep track of the accomplishments of, of the town of Florence. And as of today, five hundred and seventeen major items have been completed in the last six plus years. That's a testament to the support of council and a testament to the quality uh of, of the Florence staff in terms of the things that have been able to be achieved. One of the things when you review a new city manager that's, that's going to occur is they're going to review council meetings uh from the past. And so I wanted to take this opportunity of closing to tell the applicants for the future city manager of Florence, what a great place Florence is, what great people live in Florence, the sense of community here is fantastic. The school district has been great for my children, will be, continue to be great uh for my children until they graduate high school. Is a great move coming to Florence. Uh this, the council has always been very supportive and we have the best staff that you'll ever have an opportunity to work for, with uh in concert. Uh so please highly regard Florence and your application to Florence uh and you will not be disappointed uh with the results that you will get and the support you will get uh in this community. Uh I can uh announce what my next position is going to be. Uh I am going to start on February the seventh. Um and I take a whole weekend, two days off between the time that I, I leave Florence and I might start my new job. I will be uh the Community Development Director for Pinnell County, starting on February seventh. Uh and thank you again for your time.
Yeah, and Brent, thank you so much and we're glad to know that you will still be in the community and still a friend of Florence and continuing to help us.
You bet.
All right, council, this is our call to the public, our second time. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak?
I do not see any hands raised, ma'am.
Me either, so I'm going to go ahead and close the second call to the public and call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Hughes?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Mendoza?
I also have nothing.
Councilmember Neil?
Thank you, Brent. Best of luck, nothing else.
Councilmember Anderson?
I have nothing. I want Councilman Neil to be able to get to his ballgame.
Vice Mayor Cortez?
Um I had something, but I forgot what it was, so uh, yeah, I guess I don't want to be anything.
All right, and for me, I am just again-
I remembered.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I actually just remembered. I cannot attend Pinnell County on Pinn- Pinnell Partnership on Friday, so I need someone to please take my place.
I will be there.
I'm presenting. I know, but I need somebody to take my place.
Michelle? I'm going to do it.
Johnny raised his hand first.
Okay, thanks. No, that's fine.
You both can, you both can attend. How about that? Lisa, let's set that up. Council, you all agree?
Yes, sounds good.
That way nobody slated. Everybody has that opportunity. Okay, I just wanted to again express thank you to Brent and thank you for all that you've done and all that you will continue to do. All right, that being said, we are going to go ahead and adjourn to executive session.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is going to be to discuss and consult with designated representative of the public body um in regards to the interim responsibilities of the deputy town manager, town clerk, and provide direction on those responsibilities. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. We are adjourned to executive session.